Welcome to this meeting of the Auburn School Committee. We will begin this meeting with this Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
One, two, set.
It's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberal, free, and just as for all.
I got it, Bob.
Good. Thank you. And introductions, we will start with Adam.
Adam Hansen, Business Manager.
Shell McCollum, Assistant Superintendent.
Voice on, Board Five.
Ted Gaudier, at large.
Katie Gannon, Superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Bob McNeely, Ward One.
And Communications, has anyone received a communication that they'd care to share with the board?
It's not a communication, but it's an event that occurred.
Ah, yes.
And it was New Year's Eve, and Alfreda isn't here tonight, so I'll say that if none of you went to the mayor's New Year's Eve event, and I went very skeptically, did not buy a VIP pass, and it was fantastic, it was really good. Dan heard that there were some people coming and going all the time, and I think what it was, was the following of the bands. So if you are being played, then you left afterwards. The two restaurants that were downtown, we went into Gritty's, and it was, it must have been 500 people in there. It was elbow to elbow, so I did give kudos to the mayor and his staff for it. It was really a nice event, very nice.
Good, awesome.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say the exact same thing. I didn't go, but I read about it and saw the pictures in the paper. Looked like a very nice event that a lot of people in the town enjoyed, and it brought people from out of town here, too. Very good for the downtown businesses.
It brought a lot of people from Lewiston. Very nice.
Out of town.
And it was good TV coverage, and I happen to know because my sister was interviewed.
Oh, there you go.
Anyway, moving on, the consent agenda for this evening, which is the approval of this agenda in our minutes from the December 19th meeting, do you have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Any further question clarification needed, seeing none of those in favor? Very good. Public participation, we have a member of the public who would like to share a comment with us, something that is not on the agenda, if it is on the agenda, we'd give you the opportunity to speak to us during that time. But if there's a issue that someone would like to bring to our attention, please come to the mic. No one's springing to their feet, so we will assume that we're good to move on. Thank you. Superintendent's report, information, we are looking at the positive behavioral intervention and supports.
Right. So I've invited tonight Jennifer Butterworth, Jillian Close, and staff, and a parent, an administration from Washburn School, who are in their second year of implementation. So I thought it was really good, especially off of Ryan Fairchild's presentation around special education, things coming up around behaviors and so forth. This is what we're invested in with Jennifer, so I invite them to come forward. So Jennifer Butterworth, and she'll introduce herself and give probably some more background, is a consultant for our positive behavior intervention supports that we pay for a certain number of days. I wrote that in your superintendent's update. And then Jillian Close is our Behavior Intervention's BCBA, and she'll explain her role, and she is an employee with us. So one's contracted, one's our employee, and they work together in concert, and Washburn will share their experience. So it's all yours.
Hard way.
Okay. So we're figuring out that we are, we're the portion of the show that is going to give the overview of what PBIS is, from the national perspective as well as the state perspective, as well as the local.
Bring that mic a little bit closer, either that or sit closer.
Oh, okay.
Share that, so that the viewing public has.
Uh-huh. Is it better?
Yes, there we go.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Okay, so my role, now I'm echoing. My role is to serve as the consultant for this PBIS initiative, so let me just go on with this. Nationally speaking, this initiative has been around for some time. It's a decision-making framework that allows us to make schools more effective, efficient, and welcoming, and it's particularly for all kids. It has been around, a little bit of history, it's been around officially for 20 years. It's been researched for 20 years. The national efforts have now been five more years of research, so now we're going on 25 years. We've moved from individual kids with behavior supports to now schools that need supports. As more and more schools start implementing this framework, it has now enlarged to districts across the state and country implementing this thing, how do we support districts? To now, as more districts start doing this, states have taken on the initiative. There are about 16 states nationally that have taken this on as a statewide initiative to support their districts, that support their schools, that support their kids. Common messages in terms of permeating throughout the PBIS community is that as we become much more diverse in our student population, we certainly have got to pay attention to the social, emotional needs of our kids with the same zeal as we do with academic needs. What we're looking at is that the social, emotional competence sort of forms the basis of successful or maximizing our academic success. It is a paradigm shift, so basically what you look at is a lot of handbooks will say, what do we do upon demonstration of a problem behavior? Well, this is what we do, we've got these levels of behaviors, and this is the consequences that we do for these behaviors. PBIS is very much saying, wait a minute, while we've got to say that these behaviors can't be tolerated, we've got to spend as much or more energy in preventing problem behaviors and then teaching appropriate behaviors. So it is very much moving from a reactive model to a proactive model. It's a very exciting model, actually, or framework. Tom presented this slide 20 years ago, or almost 20 years ago, and it just grabbed me. It captures the teaching part. If kids don't know how to read, we teach. If kids don't know how to swim, we teach them how to swim. If kids don't know how to drive, we teach them how to drive. If the kids don't know how to do math, we teach, we teach. But if kids don't know how to behave, we... And so the whole notion is, we what? And we should be teaching these kids the appropriate behaviors. Effective schools, which are embraced by PBIS, is that the effective schools provide a school-wide culture that is predictable, which means that there's common language, common experiences, common vision, that it is positive. So instead of always catching kids when they're being bad, or when they're misbehaving, we're also saying, we've got to regularly recognize kids when they're doing the right thing as well. We've got to make sure our schools are safe, so embedded in that is saying, wait a minute, no, these behaviors are still going to be intolerable. No, you're not going to be able to have violence or disruptive behavior, so we want safe schools. And then we also want consistent schools, so that we have similar expectations across staff and across students as well. So it's embedded into that. The nice thing about this framework, and I love this thing, is that if you've been in the field of education, how many teachers have said, well, if you wait long enough, it's going to come and it's going to go? It is. The thing about PBIS that's nice is it says, how do we make sure that we've got research best practices that last? And so built into this model are saying, here's what we need. First of all, we need operational procedures or systems that support staff to do what they need to do, so that support teachers and administrators. And we also need data that will support us to make regular data-based objective decisions about, are we getting success? Are we decreasing our problem behaviors? Are we increasing academic success? Are we doing this thing the way it should be done, which is also equally as important? So the critical elements that are embedded into the PBIS model are marvelous, because it says, this is how we're going to keep it going. And this is why, by the way, our schools across this country are getting it going, keeping it going. There are 26,000 schools now in the United States that are implementing this model, from every state in the nation. So logically speaking, you've got kids at different levels of needs, so therefore, if we're committed to all kids, then we've got to do things at different levels depending on their needs, which gets into the tiered systems of support, which is nothing new, actually, it's evolved from the medical model and probably some other model around. But the tiered model basically says, wait a minute, there's a bunch of practices that are good for all kids, and then it's not going to be enough for some kids, so now how do we do this for some kids? And then there are going to be some practices for those few kids that these other practices aren't enough. Notice that I'm not saying that it's different, it's just not enough for those kids. The model, as we're seeing it now, has evolved. This is today's model, it wasn't quite this way 20 years ago. This model now says, wait a minute, we've got an academic component of tiers of supports, which Auburn's doing a great job, in fact. You're working a lot on the academic best practices, putting in the systems, you've got RTI for kids that aren't getting it, so you've got RTI for the kids, and you're getting it on the academic component. What we're addressing now is that behavioral, social components, so that we've got to say, wait a minute, we're doing this, now we've got to complement it with the behavioral and the social, emotional components for the tiered levels. So that's what we're focusing on. So tiered levels, you've got tiered one, tier two, tier three, Jill's going to talk about the rest.
Yes, there we go. All right, well, so we're going, I think the next slide was mine, so you can do that. Okay, so this is the tier, the tier one. This is effective for about 80% of the students, but remember that the supports that are here are really for all students as well. So, features of tier one.
Oops, sorry.
Yep.
I'm the one, Charlie.
Okay. We want to identify, define, and post clear behavioral expectations. These line up with our codes of conduct, such as being responsible, respectful, and safe. We want to develop a system to teach those behavioral expectations to all students. We want to develop a system that looks to encourage or reinforce those behaviors. And like Jennifer had mentioned before, there are certain behaviors that are just not okay, so we talk about those, and what are the expectations when those happen, what happens? And additionally, we want to establish an information system to collect relevant data for decision-making. So here is our tier two. In many ways, this is intensified tier one. An example of this would be in a classroom with well, with behaviorally, what am I saying? With behavioral expectations well-defined, and most kids are doing well, but then one student needs a little bit of extra help with something like learning to raise their hand instead of calling out, something like that. So, features of tier two. First, we definitely want to make sure that the tier ones are in place there, and then we work to intensify those tier ones. So we look to increase our prevention of the behavior, increase our reinforcement or our teaching of the behavior, and we take a closer look at why is the behavior occurring, or the function of the behavior. And with this as well, there's ongoing progress monitoring. And then there's tier three, this is about 5% of the population, that might require this level of intensity. This requires some more, next slide, zooming through. Some more behavioral competence to look closely at the variables that are affecting that behavior. And in addition to using tier two supports with them, we would also have a wraparound team here looking closely at the individual needs for that student. And it would have typically lots of different types of interventions, an intervention package.
So one of the things about this model that makes sense, first of all, is it is an efficient model. So it says, wait a minute, for years, we've been sucked into dealing with kids with the most chronic behavior needs, and we've been putting all our resources there, and we can't just keep on doing one kid at a time. We don't have the resources. We know what to do with them, but it takes a lot of resources, so what do we do? We've got to, first of all, make sure that the kids that we're dealing with really do have those needs. This model says, let's invest, first of all, in what we call the green, the tier one. Because when you go first and look at that, you usually don't have all the practices in place. If we invest in tier one, by definition, we start increasing the number of kids whose needs are being met. So even though people are saying, oh, we're not dealing with the kids with chronic behavior, we are dealing with them, because what we're doing is we're putting in a basis or a foundation of supports, which drops down some of those kids' needs in terms of what we call the tier two. And even some kids that have chronic behavior needs, guaranteed, if they're in tier one, they're going to need those two. They're definitely going to need that.
So what's a chronic behavior?
Repeated all the time disruptive behavior that is interfering with a kid's learning or the learning of other kids. It can be a wide array, it could be kids that are off task, that they are refusing, that they could be vocally inappropriate language, it can be anything.
So are we picking up the kids that are, they're not chronic?
Yes, that's the nice thing.
But are we picking up the other kids that have, maybe have some behavioral issues because of, it was a bad day at home? I didn't like what I had for breakfast, and I can, I'm going to throw a tantrum? Are we picking up those kids?
Yes, yes, with the tier one. Because what we're doing with the tier one is you've got common expectations, consistency, predictability, which actually the tier one practices are phenomenal for kids, the trauma-based types of things. So even if I'm not necessarily a student that is living in trauma, I might have trauma for one day. And so the fact that I have consistent expectations, I'm regularly being recognized, I am having consistent expectations that this is helping those kids as well. That's the beauty of this, is it helps, it helps those kids while we're addressing their needs.
And we're doing this system-wide?
Well, she's going to go into it. Jennifer, can you pull your mic when you speak? You're doing a great job, though, you're being productive.
Okay.
Just.
But however, it's Jill's turn.
Yeah, just keep swinging it back and forth.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, yeah. So PBIS, this is a team-led process at all levels. In tier one, there's a leadership team that works to implement the tier one supports. In the tier two, the team would work to coordinate the supports needed for those on tier two. And then the tier three is really a wraparound approach where the team would look closely at individualized needs for each student. And we are very data-driven, and we look to data to decide how to move forward and how to make changes and make decisions. We use information systems and tools from the PBIS framework in order to achieve meaningful outcomes. So, for example, we would look to see an increase in a school safety survey, and we would look to see a decrease in suspensions, for example. And additionally, we are looking at our fidelity of implementation. Are we doing all of the parts of PBIS? And there are a lot of schools that have said, you know, we tried PBIS and it wasn't effective. They tend to pick parts of it to do that might be easier or more fun, and they don't kind of do the whole gamut. It's important to check that out and make sure we're going across that. It's yours.
What we, what we've learned so far is, first of all, that we know that we can do tier one particularly. We got that down, that's the research that's really strong.
Excuse me, when you say we can do tier one.
Schools.
Who's providing that service? How's that being implemented in the school?
How it's being implemented in the schools is that there's a team, and the team looks at the various components of tier one. Are there clear rules and expectations, or a code and expectations that define the code? Are we teaching the code to the kids? Are we routinely recognizing kids for positive behavior? Are we clearly communicating what is unacceptable? What behaviors go to the office? What is managed by the classroom? And are we collecting data? So there's a team that's doing this, and then the whole school gets involved with it. So.
I guess that's more my point. You spoke of a team that does this, but now you're saying the whole school. I guess that's what I'm driving towards. How does that get implemented at the classroom level?
Okay, great question, because one of the things, nationally speaking, is that if you're not doing it at the classroom, you ain't doing it. So one of the things that happens is, as the team kind of tries to do the legwork, you filter it out to the school, and you say, this is what we've done so far, how are we implementing it at the school level? General, non-classroom settings, and then in the classroom settings.
So is that being observed?
Yeah.
By the team?
Yes, it's being observed by the administrators. It's observed by, it's being reported by the team. Team leaders will meet, and they will discuss, and Washburn can speak to this, I know more detail, but the team leaders will meet, they're usually the venue for meeting with the other teachers. How are we doing this? When I go into the classrooms, I'm looking at the presence of, physical presence of the code, the expectations, seeing that the teachers are responding or acknowledging kids. When Andrew does an observation of a teacher, he will have things in mind under, I believe it's environment, that's the rubric for the Marzano evaluation, so it's tied in. And by the way, the rubric is one of the systems, because you say, wait a minute, it's right there in our teacher evaluation. Are we routinely recognizing kids for progress? Yeah, rules in place, yeah. And if they're not, then we start making recommendations as to what we need to do to improve upon that. So yes, it gets drilled down. It's hard to get drilled down, because the classroom teacher, I mean, the classroom has very unique needs as well. But the constant attention to, these are the things that need to get in place, are we doing this? Here's our data. Does the data reflect that we're getting it? And if the data doesn't reflect that, what are we doing that's not there? And we can give you data that says, well, what you're not doing is, this isn't present. Which gets to, one of the questions, I can show you a couple of data sheets to that. PBIS is at all levels, so it's preschool all the way to high school. But we know at high schools, it's a little funky, because you've got kids that are embracing, they need to take much more ownership, there's a unique dynamics going on at the high school, but it is doable, but we have to customize it, particularly freshman year especially is important. There is research that says that we get increased academic gains when we're pairing this with effective PBIS, so that's nice. We also know that we can do this with fidelity over time, so we got the data that will say that we can sustain this over time. I think some of these pictures might add as we get to some of the data. I mentioned that you start with individual kid, and then you went to schools, and then you went to districts. Well, that's an incredible piece to help schools keep it up. And so that district-level initiative does very different things than what the schools do. So the district is really looking at, how are we aligning initiatives? How are we managing and allocating resources? You need training, you need training, and you need training. Well, we only need to do one training across these folks to be much more efficient, you need coaches. So the district support has this kind of a model that is different. You see the upper part, which is stakeholder support, which part of it is you saying, wait a minute, guys, this is what it's all about, and what more information do you need, and how do we share the information? Funding, which is, half the time, there's so many different initiatives coming in, but you have funding for Title II, you have funding for Title IV, you have special ed funding, and how do we all use those fundings to be efficient to support this initiative? You've got policies and workforce, that's kind of behind-the-scenes work that administrators do, that when we're in the classrooms, we really don't care, but we really do care, but it's behind the scenes. The district also, with that district leadership team, which there is one, which Katie and the administrators are on, are also then looking at, how are we coordinating training, which is giving of information? The ongoing coaching, which is what Jillian and I are doing right now, with going into the schools, going into the teams, saying, this is what's best practices, here are some ideas. Mind you, PBIS can be customized to each school to make it context, so it's not like, do this. It's, here's the practice, here are a thousand ways you can get it done, but just get it done your way. Evaluation feedback, so we do some evaluation for the schools and help them get on what's called SWISS, which is an information system, and Andrew and we'll give you some information, and then do the behavioral expertise. So you've got two levels that the district's doing. You've got the behind-the-scenes stuff that we don't see on a day-to-day basis in schools, and then you've got the above-the-scenes, which is directly hitting the schools in terms of supports. And each one of those blocks has a number of practices associated with it in the PBIS model, by the way. Is this me or you? Me. We have several schools that are embarking, what we call in different phases of implementation. The high school has actually got a marvelous PLC, and they're in exploration. They're doing a lot of research, reading, understanding what PLC is, so they're in the exploration. We've got several of the elementary schools, Washburn certainly is doing year two, Sherwood Heights. Walton is at the beginning, initial formations and doing parts of this. East Auburn, I just heard from the principal over at Park Avenue, and be working with her next month in terms of initial installment. And then Auburn Middle School was doing it, actually, but then, this is why you have to have measures, and you shook your head, because they didn't have fidelity of implementation measures. And so we went in to do the fidelity of implementation tool with them, and they said, oh, there's all of these other parts that we need to put in place, because that's why things aren't happening the way we need to happen. So Auburn Middle School has kicked in with a marvelously representative team, and so they've just kicked in, last month, they started their routine meetings to start moving toward implementing these other systems that are in tier one, anyway. And then, I think I've spent them all, so elementary, middle, and high school.
So where's Fairview?
Fair, we don't know, but we believe that Fairview has a team, but they haven't.
Just don't know about it, yes.
They do. They do have a team.
Yep, they have a team. There's different levels of involvement right now, and people have been going off on different ways, and we're trying to coordinate all that.
Yeah. So here are some examples of one of those measures, looking at the fidelity. So this looks at different critical features of PBIS, and you can see that they're all kind of rated for each school. Those are, most of those are baseline, so we took those. Some of the numbers are quite nice. You can see the one that has two different colors, we did that two years in a row to look at, you know, changes that they've made, so you can see some improvement there.
So just to clarify, do you want to explain how you do that? You do an assessment of the school.
This is called a school-wide evaluation tool. This measure's just tier one. So rules and expectations, teaching the rules, rule violation system, system for acknowledging kids, and a system for managing the data. And so basically, we look at what's visible in terms of written products, we go around to classrooms and look, we ask staff and we ask kids questions. And then based on that, we translate that into a graph. What you'll see is, look, expectations defined, they're taught, there's a rule-following system, a rule-violation system. So we can give schools a picture and say, well, you've got to be up to 80%, and you're down here. But you're getting there, and here, and then we make recommendations. When we interviewed your kids, they said they hadn't received any of the, or 20% said, or 50% kids said. When we went through the classrooms, we noticed that these things were not posted. So you can give feedback to the schools about to what extent they're implementing this thing, which is nice, because it's objective. You can say, look, I'm not just saying you're not doing it, you're doing. It's, here's the data, and this is what you gave me, it's not what I'm creating, type of thing. So these tools are built into the system.
It's a nice look at where we are and where we need to head, so. This was some information from the SWISS program, and this gives, this can give information such as where problem behaviors usually occur, what types of problem behaviors, time of day, all that type of thing. And that leads to decision-making there, so Jennifer obviously has much more.
Andrew will speak a little bit more.
Yeah.
Andrew's on the SWISS system, School-wide Information Processing System. It's a web-based application to manage discipline data. So basically, it's an online So basically, it's an online discipline referral form. Teachers fill it out and it automatically prints out for schools these graphs. And then the schools can look at this graphs and say, whoa, what time, look at that middle one there, over there, ching ching, it's probably around lunchtime. But it will be able to target in, then you ask some systematic questions and zoom in your problem statements so that then you can allow, this Tier One team will then say, whoa, it's the third grade kids at recess on blah, blah, blah. What are we gonna do about it? And then we can come design some school-wide programs. If a lot of kids are doing it, it's a system. If it's a few kids, then it's the kids. And so we get to do interventions for the kids.
Here's some examples of behavioral matrices that we use. These line up with the codes of conduct, so you can see the be safe, respectful, responsible. This tells exactly, what does that look like and what does that sound like when you're in the hallway? What does that sound like? What does that look like when you're in the cafeteria? They're different. And these actually can serve as some behavioral social skills curriculum for the whole school because all the kids are learning the exact same behaviors.
Can I ask you a question? Because that was my question, actually. I know when they first started implementing the codes of cooperation in the schools back three or four years ago, each classroom was creating their own. And so, is there some kind of a consistency mechanism that you have in there? Because it sounds like you're doing it by school rather than by classroom.
Right, that's correct. It's by location and, yes, I think there's, we've come to a little bit more of the agreement that they have to be the same. Because we're definitely seeing that going into some classrooms. So we are, that's something that we've been working on, yeah.
We experienced that big time in Auburn Middle School. Because each classroom had their own set. And I know that Mike Overmaltin has experienced that. And one of the problems with that is it makes it really difficult for kids. When you ask them what their code is or what the expectation is, they've got seventeen different thousand, different things depending on where they are. So when we, you know, we kind of back it off and say, well, the recommendations of PBIS land say, you gotta have consistency here for kids. It's gonna, you know, there's only so many grooves in the head that can remember this stuff. And so how do we make this effective for kids to remember what being respectful in the library looks like? So yes, it is very much a school-wide drilled-down-to-the-classroom consistent, so-
Now, do the students have any input into these codes of cooperation? Or does this come down to that?
It is always recommended that kids participate, but you really are, when you develop that expectations matrix that you saw, the Tier One team has some basics there. And then the kids, but you don't really show that to the kids until after you kind of pull it out of them, so that they're seeing it. And then if they don't, for instance, if I wanted them to stay on topic, they'll never say that I should be staying on topic. So you have to pull that stuff out from their conversation, type of thing. So you try to get as much participation. Big time at the high school level, though. High school kids take on almost ownership of developing the expectations matrix itself, type of thing. Middle school, we try to, but not as much as the high school. And that's a big difference in the high school and elementary, middle school kinds of things.
So is it working now at the middle school or is it still in incubation?
Say that one more time.
Is it working at the middle school now or is it still being developed?
When you say it.
The code of conduct, is it-
We have, we are looking at that now. Because one of the things is they have their character, five character traits. And in their five character traits, they've tried to make it fit with the PBIS expectations matrix. So they're going back and reviewing that to make sure it's much more consistent and effective across for the expectation matrix.
There's still, Jennifer did an assessment, went in and did that whole assessment. And so, the leadership team and the principal have taken that, created a PBIS team that looked at that data. And working with Jennifer, what's our first step? And working as a team. So they're in the early stages. They just got their assessment done with Jennifer. He just started. I think they've met a couple of times since-
We've met maybe two, maybe three times.
Right.
But also even in that, and Bob was fantastic, is once I did the S C T, and they were very welcoming as I'm going around looking at stuff, is that I also presented that information to the whole faculty. So I said, this is what I found in PBIS land, these are the critical components, this is what you did, and this is what I saw. And then I would say, you know, and so part of the recommendations are, we gotta get going, but you can't do it all at once. So where are we gonna start? And so that's what we do with the team is, where are we starting? They have a good reward system in place. And that oftentimes is the thing that kids love, but that's not the only thing in PBIS. And so now, how do we, which, where do we start? AMS decided that we want to decide on tightening up the rule violation system and the data system. So they want to get on that SWISS data system, which is great. Then I can be very objective because it's the data, here's what we do. Oh, we need to have this clarified and we can go from there. So we're addressing it step by step. Did that answer your question?
Sort of.
Okay.
So speaking about, you were talking about the reinforcement system. Acknowledging students when they do well and not just when they're not doing well is a really important aspect of PBIS. So one way we would do that would just increase praise, right? We want to get to those five to one levels of praise to redirection. But for some other students, and as a way to just make things fun, we can use something that's tangible. So these are some of the things that we're already doing in the district. So we have some schools that are using tickets and they'll give tickets out. As students are doing well, they'll align it to the code and to the behavior. We have celebrations that are going on. Kids could earn different types of celebrations. There are code tickets that they can use at the school store. And then at one school, they're giving pennies out and the students work together as a classroom. They've earned something fun. But then the pennies end up going back into the community. So we have a number of things that we kind of just started.
A lot of schools will have a ticket system and then people will think that that's an interesting thing. But the interesting part of that is it's a reminder to kids of the positive exchange. And they will save those things amazingly. If they lose them, they get uptight and they're upset. And it's not necessarily about what they can trade in as much as it's how much it means to them, the reminder of that actual, that exchange. We have three schools right now doing what's called the check-in, checkout, which is a Tier Two intervention. So just know that that's been going on and in progress in three of our schools. And then Washburn has now just started working on a social skills kind of RTI as well for kids. Many of the schools are working on individual teams. And of course, Jill is working on some and I'm working on some individual teams. With that, let's let Andrew come on up and then we'll get out of here so you can see some stuff unless you have any questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Jennifer and Jillian are getting up, but I want to tell, I want to really say how much we've appreciated your hard work. Because they have to come in and sometimes be the mirror and say, this is working, but you need to be doing that. And that's sometimes very difficult. They have to build relationships with staff, teachers, with parents, with students, with families to really make an impact. So, you know, they have to sometimes say the hard things. And I'm sure Washburn can talk about their coaching experience. Sometimes it's, you know, you have to hear some things you don't want to necessarily hear, but to make you better. So Andrew, you're kicking us off.
Andrew, is this your support team?
This is my posse. So welcome and thank you for having this opportunity to talk a little bit about PBIS and what we've done so far at Washburn. This is my second year as principal. And when I sat down with my leadership team, I asked them, what do they want to see or what are some of the challenges? And behavior and consistency was one of their top priorities. So looking at this program, it definitely has helped curve some of that at Washburn. It's a lot calmer if you walk the halls the last couple of weeks or this year so far. And they can definitely attest to that. So just kind of where we are and where we're going. So in year one, we had our Tier One team, which was me. I had teachers on the team. I had Heather Barnett here, who was a parent, on the team and we met every week. We made it a priority to meet every Thursday at one o'clock. So we could set up those rule violations. We could set up protocols that were needed. We have a school code. If you ask anybody in our school what our school code is, it's announced every morning. All the kids know exactly what it is. Whole school language was developed. And I have a couple slides, a couple pictures of what that is. We all have a common language, what it means to be respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe in the hallways, the bathrooms, cafeteria, playground, classrooms. And so that has been our focus in our language. So if you ask any kid, what does it mean to be respectful in the cafeteria? There's big charts in the cafeteria, they can reference that, and so on. We also had protocols for Tier One. As you heard Jennifer say, Tier One is very essential to this program. Having that relationship with the kids and building what they need in the classroom and in common areas is essential. So we had a buddy classroom protocol developed. As a team, what does it mean when you need to take a break or visit a buddy classroom for a few minutes to kind of reset your body? We also began check-in, checkout, which is that Tier Two intervention that Jennifer was talking about. This year's our year two. We created a Tier Two team to kind of really dive into some more specifics, especially with that social emotional learning. On that one, our coaches, so I have a math coach, a literacy coach, a P E P G coach, our school nurse, the guidance counselor, all play a role on that team. We have, with the SIG, I hired two additional, I'm gonna call them behavior interventionists. They work very closely with Jennifer, myself, and all of the staff to help de-escalate, to help kind of curve and teach those social emotional skills to kids in the classroom that are having that chronic behavior over and over again. We also are looking at, what I would like to see is kind of a wraparound model for Tier Three students. So those kids that are not working well with Tier Two, we can kind of talk about what does that mean. Something Jennifer and I are still brainstorming on, where are we gonna go with Tier Three? That's my big focus for this year and for next. Again, we are doing some social learning skills focused small groups. So Maggie, Lucy, our school guidance counselor, along with those two behavior interventionists, are meeting with small groups, teaching them strategies on when they get frustrated or when they get angry, what, how do they deal with that behavior? Also, teachers are meeting with Jennifer weekly. They spend their Tuesday planning period meeting. They talk about Tier One strategies, Tier Two strategies, and get ideas to kind of try, they bring kids to the table that could be on check-in, checkout, or not, or graduate from that intervention. So year one, so last year, we had forty students who received that Tier Two intervention. We had nine students who moved to a self-monitoring. So they had made their goal for so many consecutive days and were able to monitor their own behavior on their clipboard chart. And we had two students graduate from the Tier Two program. So they, in our protocols, after so many days of making your growth goal at ninety percent, you go to self-monitoring. After so many days of self-monitoring, you graduate. So we kind of are looking at that. This year, we have twenty-three students who are on check-in, checkout, so that's nine percent. So if you remember that triangle, you want fifteen percent to be on a Tier Two. So we're at nine percent of our students receiving this intervention. Currently nineteen are actually on it. We had two students move and we have two students who are not really responsive to the check-in, checkout process. So that's why we need to kind of do a Tier Three wraparound model for those students. We do have nine students who are on self-monitoring and we actually just had three students graduate from the program. Interesting slide here. Last year, we had, from September to January first, we had one thousand two hundred and seventy-five office referrals. So that was how many kids would come to my office and I would talk to them, send them back to class, or intervene in the hallway, intervene in the classroom. So pretty extensive. With the implementation of where we are this year, to date, I've had to work with four hundred and ten office management behaviors. So if we did the math, that's two hundred and eighty-eight recouped hours of learning time and two hundred and sixteen minutes that I'm allowed to be in classrooms, talking and walking the halls and talking to kids and working with them.
That's amazing.
So hopefully our test scores show that. So in every classroom, as you heard, there is the common language. So here, the one on the left is in a special ed classroom, respectful, responsible, person and safe, that's our code. And we also, and then one is in Ms. Gatcombe's class on the right. So kind of brainstorming, using the first couple of days of school to really dive in, to really talk about what does it mean to be respectful in the class. And a lot of it is student-driven. Teachers do have that handbook, they do have that matrix. However, it's kind of like when you're a teacher, you have a lesson plan, you can derail from the lesson plan to really kind of focus on that. So I probably should have had my posse introduce themselves, because they're next. So I'm Andrew Barnes, the principal.
I'm Heather Barnett, I'm a parent of Washburn students.
Stephanie Hathaway, P E P G coach. I'm Nicole Gat- Hold for a minute, Nicole. But Stephanie's role this year is new to Washburn. Because part of our work at Washburn is to not have teacher turnover. So part of the goal this year is having Stephanie working part-time to help support our new teachers, to give that more one-on-one so that they feel supported. Me, it's a school that has a lot of needs, but they're doing such great work, that we also want to make sure teachers have as much support as the students have support. So Stephanie, we'll be watching her data on how we're doing with keeping our teachers at Washburn and- So far so good.
They all came back after Christmas.
Yeah, they came back after, that's awesome. But doing a lot of, that was something Andrew approached us about to say, you know, can we put this position in for this year only with our SIG money and what we did? And so we're, we have Stephanie out this year to see if that makes a difference. So I want to point out that Stephanie's doing some important work. She was a first grade teacher and she's out for this year doing P E P G and her reading recovery students as well. So, and now Nicole.
Nicole Gatcombe, I teach five-six this year, but I also get to play the role of a parent at Washburn. So I get to wear both hats and see it from two different perspectives.
And I'm Lisa Coburn, I'm the math coach at Washburn.
So again, going back to that common language, these are posters that are all over our school. And every single classroom is our voice level chart. So when you ask a kid to be a voice level one, they all know what that means. Again-
What does it mean?
Voice, whisper voice. Thank you. Yeah, zero asylum. So our hallway, our classrooms all have posters, all reference every day. I do announcements every day. Every day I announce the code. Assemblies have been spectacular. Teachers have done a great job this year going over the expectations during an assembly. It's night and day compared to what it has been last year when we first started this process.
Okay, can I, Andrew, excuse me, can I walk into any building in the system and see the same code? Or is it only made up for you guys? You guys made your own?
So when I was a teacher in Lewiston, we did PBIS and we use safe, respectful, responsible. So I think those are the three tenants of the PBIS process. At Washburn, we kept persistent because that was one that constantly came up in the years past. So if you were to walk in Fairview, for example, you could say, they probably don't call it a code, but we call it a code just because that's what we came up with as a team. But they would say respectful, responsible, and safe.
Okay, thank you.
So now, like, I want us to just have a quick dialogue from the administrator standpoint, from my staff standpoint, and a parent. And then I do have a video of some kids talking about it after, so. Yeah, Lisa's gonna go first because she has to go pick up her daughter.
Sorry. Do you want to hold it? I feel like I'm rude talking over you. Sorry. So I have had the pleasure of working at Washburn for almost over twenty years. I get to stand at the end. So from a staff point of view, having been a classroom teacher for twenty years and now in the role of the math coach, I've seen a lot happen at Washburn. And I would say in the last six years, we've had a lot of turnover of staff. We've had a lot, we've had new administrators, we've had a lot of classroom teachers. So I think sometimes people will look at PBIS and it's like, why aren't people just doing that? It sounds like common sense. But as a new teacher coming in, and I think having Stephanie's position this year has helped as well, at Washburn, we didn't have that common language. And we didn't have that for our staff and we didn't have it for our students. And I think, as a result, we had a lot of behaviors that were interrupting the learning of our students. So from my perspective, I think having PBIS in our school, giving teachers the support and the common language for both the staff and the students to know, this is what it looks like to be a learner at Washburn. This is what's expected, these are the consequences, and this is all working together to become learners, to improve our own selves. So that's my perspective.
Just to clarify, that's okay. One of the reasons we have so, had so many turn, so much turnover at Washburn was because it was a failing school. And there was a program that the state had that we had to divest of a lot of people, transfers on it. So I think for people out there-
So I think for people out there in the audience have to realize, it's not because necessarily the teachers left. It's because the program called for a lot of turnover in that, at that school.
Well, I think too, not necessarily that reason, but they come in, and they're new teachers. They get overwhelmed, they're nervous. Some teachers have left the profession, some moved closer to home. I mean, a lot of different reasons. So I think, you know, we still have one that follows on Twitter. I think she misses you guys a lot. But I think some of it is, they got teachers who came to Washburn as a stepping stone as well. They got their experience and moved closer to home.
I've been there nine, this is my ninth year, and I am the only classroom teacher still there. No one else, a classroom teacher, was there when I started. Like, that's our turnover. And that was not because of a program saying we had to. It's because they got burnt out and overwhelmed, or another opportunity or whatever. But that's, it's scary.
Teachers who moved into Washburn from other schools, like Stephanie's one of them, Lisa Kurtz, Sharon Payton, Carol Chalani, they have moved from other schools into Washburn and stayed. It's been those who have come in as first-year teachers that have gone out, or other teachers that it was stepping. But a lot of the teachers have transferred in the last nine years from other schools in Auburn have stayed.
So just to clarify it, and I don't mean to interrupt this, but we need to clarify how many stayed, how many went, why they went. Because I know there's an audience in TV land that's listening to this, and this is backing up the position that we have a lot of teachers leaving. So you two, you three, are parents, are teachers that have stayed a long time. And I know that there's one, Kathy Gaisen. She was there a long time, she retired. So I know that there's retirement, but I also know that there's a lot of teachers that have stayed. A lot of teachers went for different reasons, not just as a stepping stone. Because that was a school that was in dire need of help. And that's when Laura Shaw went over in place of Dr.?
Yeah. Dr. C.
Katiri, Dr. C, yes. Yeah, so when Andrew came in, recognizing Laura Shaw coming out, Laura expressing, here's what needs, this is what, support for success. Andrew coming in, Jennifer coming in, Steph, you know, different staff coming from other schools that were committed to working with that population. Having parents, I mean, having a parent from Washburn here tonight is huge.
Well, actually, I have two parents, so that's good.
So, well, two parents, but this is, this is, Washburn parent voice being here tonight says a huge thing for the Washburn community. So I think, you know, they're on a good, they always say to me, Andrew, you know, make sure Andrew's well cared for, so he doesn't leave. And he says, I hope the teachers are well cared for. So they do, they do support each other, and I think that's why Andrew said, can we have Stephanie come out to support this group of teachers coming in? So trying to do those things, so I, I'm just very proud. You walk in a school, and it's a different, if you haven't been to Washburn lately, it's just, it's really a good place.
Please visit.
Yeah, please visit.
I think just going along with what Lisa had said, is that it's, I mean, I've been there for a while, and it's a total different feel this year. I think that our staff feel supported. I think the kids, just seeing our kids, and this year I've gotten to loop with some of them, seeing the difference, they, things we used to have to do before, all the teaching and going over things and creating all these codes and expectations, we didn't have to spend as much time with that, because they knew it. They didn't matter. My daughter's in first grade, she was in kindergarten last year, and this year she can tell you what the code is, but what it means, not just what it is. You know, we used to say it on the intercom every day, but we never talked about, what does that mean? What does it look like? And it's the same anywhere we go. I pick my kids up from library, and they're reflecting. How did we do today being respectful? What parts were we missing? What do we need to work on? Any incentive system that we do now in the school, it used to be, you know, you do your thing in your class, you do yours in yours, but it didn't really mean the same thing. And now it's, everything's tied to our code and our expectations. And so for my kids, they get fake money, and it's based on the expectations. Were you respectful today? Were you responsible? And if you weren't, what do you need to work on? And that language is the same no matter where we go. Before, I was a four-five teacher, and we would split our kids, my partner teacher and I. And even though we say we're doing the same things, what was expected in one class was different than in the other. And that was very confusing for the kids, and that's when we'd have behaviors, and that's when we were frustrated. This year, the five-sixth, we split between three classrooms. So I do math, someone does science, someone does reading. It is exactly the same in all three classes. They know what's expected, they know what to do. We're speaking the same exact language. If Stephanie stops them in the hall, it's exactly what I would say. I think that's the big key, is that we are all doing exactly the same thing, from walking in the hall to our assemblies. I hated assemblies before, they were chaotic, they were... And no matter what we would do, the kids knew, well, if they're going to do it, then I'm going to. But now it's exactly the same expectation, which kind of sounds silly, like, why weren't we doing it? I don't know, but we are now doing it. And we have those conversations with Jennifer, who's an amazing resource. And if that Tier One isn't done, then you're not really going to get the results. So that Tier One is so important. And having Stephanie is such a huge role in our school to help with getting that set up, especially for all of the new teachers. And what does that look like, and how do we do this? I don't know.
Can I ask a question? How does this dovetail with the habits of work? You don't have habits of work?
Yeah, habits of mind. Yeah, it's all tied together. So a lot of those skills that we're trying to teach for the habits of mind dovetail pretty nicely with...
Sounded that way, so that's awesome.
Yeah, and it ties in with the trauma, and, you know, like Jennifer said, this, like, these kids need structure and predictability, and this is providing that.
Yeah, and I would agree with anything that Nicole said with that, but also just focusing on the fact that we're teaching kids with this means now. And it's not, I mean, I taught kindergarten for years at Fairview, I moved to first grade, and that was always part of my curriculum. But now we are all sitting down with our kids and saying, you know, and any kid, respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe, they all know it, but they know what it means. We sat there, and we said, well, what does it mean? What does it look like when you're being respectful? When you're being a respectful listener, what does that look like? And there's a chart, and it's up on the wall, and we revisit it. You know, when I, last year, as a first grade teacher, I did that all the time. We would stop, and if somebody was being respectful, he's being a really respectful listener right now, look at him sitting, his eyes are on the speaker. I think so, it's teaching the kids what it looks like, what it sounds like. They truly understand it, it's specific to them, there's examples. We stop and we acknowledge it and celebrate it all the time. And that's the other difference, is the positiveness about the whole thing. You know, instead of me going, oh, it's a great job, I can be like, you are so persistent. You were having a hard time with that, and you kept trying and trying, and I'm really proud of you for following that code. So it gives the kids an actual, it's something to hold on to. It's not just a good job, you're doing a great job, nice try. It's specific, what are you doing that's following our code? What are you doing that I'm proud of, you know? And I think that piece has been huge too, because the students really know. And they, the more they hear it, the more they want to hear it. And so, you know, we talk about two for the four-to-one or five-to-one, that we're praising these kids. You know, if we say to them, I'm sorry, but you know, you're not being respectful right now, you need to do this, then I'm telling that very same child four positive things, they're doing well. The minute that that child is doing something, I'm right on it, and I'm telling them, wow, great job. And, you know, given what our population is, that's not a lot of what they get at home. So, you know, it's, it's just all around. They understand it, they live it, they head a part in setting it up, and it's just, it's positive all around. And I think that has made a huge difference for our kids.
I'm going to interrupt for a moment. You mentioned a point that is of interest to me. We've got the child for, you know, six to eight hours, and yet they go home to a different environment. We have been establishing, trying to establish, an environment within the schools that are, is consistent, predictive, well-mannered, all of those things. How are we assisting our parents? And maybe you're going to address this.
That's a beautiful segue.
So maybe it's a good segue, I'm going a good segue into you. How are we addressing, informing the parents about what's happening in the school and how they can assist with that? And how that model within the schools can assist perhaps in a home life? So, see, there's a segue.
So I can say that, to speak to that, I guess. You know, we've been talking a lot about how to really get this information to parents, because there's so much to it. It's so much more than code tickets, it's so much more than, you know, non-punitive and this and that, and how to really get the parents to understand. We, you know, we've started with some communication, we've talked about making a video. So we're still kind of working on how to really infiltrate or get that information out to parents in a neat enough package so that they can understand all of the work that has gone in. But one thing I wanted to speak to earlier, we were talking about the turnover at Washburn. So my oldest son is in fifth grade at Washburn right now. In nearly all of his years, he's had a first-year teacher. And I have been able to see the difference, even just in the last two years. You know, really, those first-year teachers, I know sometimes you can walk into those classrooms and they just, they seem chaotic, or they're, you know, you can just see on the teacher's faces that this is all new and it's a lot to manage. But the teachers have been doing such a wonderful job. And I think that, you know, this really speaks to Stephanie and what she's been doing there as well, because the teachers this year, my younger son has a new teacher as well. And the whole process just seems so much more smooth this year. I know that that's not necessarily related to PBIS, but I felt that it was important to say, so. But I do want to say that over the, you know, what a joy it's been to be able to be part of this team starting last year. So I've been mostly involved with the Tier One piece. And kind of being asked to go to these meetings, I had no idea what they were talking about at first. But to really have seen, you know, you can walk through the halls now, and the difference is palpable. You can really feel that it's just, it's more calm, and everybody knows what they're doing and where to go. And I think that, to have seen Jennifer really come in, and, you know, she kept everybody, she's always kept us on task, and she's given us all of the framework and all of the bones of everything. But this team of people has really built this. So it's not just someone telling us what we need to do and us figuring out how we're going to do it. We've really built it for the school. And to really see these folks really dig into what that looks like in the common spaces, right? You were talking about specific classrooms having their own, but now students know what to expect when they're walking from their classroom to lunch or to the library, all of those common spaces and how to behave. And there was something else I wanted to say about that, that I thought was really important. It's gone, but I just think that it's been really nice. And I think that that whole Tier One piece too, I think that you guys have all asked a lot of questions that have made me think of so many things I wanted to say. So I have a, I think that the Tier One piece does catch all of the students. I think it builds a safety net almost. So, you know, as, you know, one of my children doesn't necessarily have any chronic behaviors, but when he's had a bad day or he's had something, he knows exactly what to expect. He knows exactly how it's going to be managed. And I think it kind of gives them trust, so that if they have another student in their classroom that is having some behaviors, they trust that it's going to be taken care of. So that in and of itself creates less of a distraction, because they already know the process of what's going to happen. And I have that house that the doors open, and there are a lot of kids that come and go from my house a lot. And just to hear them talking about it, or to hear that they all are on the same page when it comes to these things, or just to hear, my son came home celebrating that one of his fellow students had graduated from check-in, check-out. And so they don't necessarily have to tell everybody, and not everybody has to know, but to see that my son really cared that another one of these students had been having challenges, and, you know, she's overcome it and she's graduated. For him to come home and tell his other friend how proud he was of her, I think that that meant a lot. So just, we've seen so many wonderful things. And, you know, I've only been with Washburn from kindergarten to fifth grade with my oldest son, but I have two more that are going to be there next year. And I couldn't imagine a different school. I just think that these people work so hard, and they care so much about the kids. And this PBIS thing has just, I can't say enough good stuff about it, but it's been really wonderful to be a part of, so, thank you, well said. Yeah.
I want to piggyback off of something she just said really quick too, is that I had friends over this weekend who I've known my whole life, and they go to Washburn. And they, they were even talking about, and I hadn't said anything, but they were even talking about just the difference they've seen and they felt. And how the children now know, I think, I feel like before, our kids, you know, they knew, they didn't really know. They would do something, but they didn't really know what would happen, or, you know, what the process was. And now they know, if I do this, then that. Which again, I think, sounds kind of silly, like, why wouldn't you? But we didn't really have a clear set, like, here's what's expected.
And then talk about that fidelity reason on the microphone, but to see, like, these folks have drilled down one of the little, you know, throughout, these have been brought up to say, hey, this could be a challenge, how do we get past it? And they really drilled that down, so that there is a plan, or that there's a level of consistency at every level in that school, and they need to build some comfort.
And I wanted to piggyback the check-in, check-out. We actually have four kids now that have graduated. They are our fifth and sixth graders. But they, that program is, I don't know, I think it's just such, it's a great tool for students to be able to monitor themselves. And so all four of those fifth, sixth graders referred themselves, because they went, I'm struggling with something. And we knew it, and we had conversations, but they came up with their goals. What is it that they thought they needed to work on?
Individually.
Individually, not us saying, you need to work on this. Obviously, we have a little bit of, you know, say in what we're seeing, and do you really need to work on that? But it's tied exactly to our expectations. So if it's being respectful, one of our students was using kind language, because that was something she struggled with. And so it's really, it's a nice way for them to learn and to monitor themselves, so that now it's not a problem. And they were so proud of themselves, and their friends were so proud, that they graduated. And all that means is they're no longer on it. But to them, it was like a huge thing. And, you know, we're obviously having conversations with Jennifer all the time about what we're seeing, how it works. And our two ed techs, behavior supports are huge in that process, and the bonds that they've been making with these kids. It's just been, I think, an unbelievable process.
And a whole piece of the positivity and recognizing those things, I think, makes it accessible for every student. So students that aren't having behavior problems or challenges are, they all have access to the system, so they're all in it together. They all want to earn a code ticket, they all want to, you know, model the matrices that they have posted around the school. And it's so nice, because everybody owns a piece of it, I think.
So my concern is, you got a high mobility rate. So if they stay within our district, and they go to Sherwood, and they know respect, they're going to get to Sherwood, and it's going to be different?
My thought is, I got to go with Jennifer to the national conference in Chicago, which was amazing. And my thinking, and Jennifer kind of did all of this work and wrote what it was, what it looks like to be respectful. My guess is, they are probably very similar, maybe slightly different, but I mean, for the most part, my guess is they're probably, I don't know if you want to answer.
It is similar, respectful, responsible, and safe.
And what's under there is probably pretty similar to what? And it would be like, any other time a child comes into our school or moves in, we then take that time and teach, what does it look like? And what is it here? You know, it may be a difference somewhere else, but we're having that conversation. What does it look like here? And maybe they want to add something. You know, maybe they come from Sherwood and they come to us, and they go, well, we had this, and we would have that conversation. Oh, that's great, let's add it, because we didn't think of that. And so it's...
And you add it for the whole school.
We would have that conversation at our Tier One or with Jennifer, and that would be, yeah.
So all these wonderful sixth graders have learned this through the elementary schools, okay? And then they have big deals that go into the middle school. And we all know what the middle school's like. It's getting better. But what happens to the code up there? Sixth graders, do you have a sixth grader, Nicole?
Well, I, yeah, I teach five-sixth.
But, all right, anybody that has a sixth grader who's going to the middle school next year, what's going to happen at the middle school with them?
Well, they're going to have their code.
But is the code going, I mean, they're coming from everywhere.
I'm going to guess, respect and responsible will be there.
Jennifer, that's where Jennifer comes in. Jennifer's doing that work as a district to keep them similar. And we have a district team now, that that, my understanding from the conference, is that's the goal, to keep things streamlined. So no matter where they go, it's streamlined and similar.
Right.
The code is very, is going to be very similar, because we also have the core values.
Core values, yeah.
AMS still uses the core values in their code. And they've got respect, responsibility, fairness, courage, I can't remember what they are. But it'll be there, it'll all be there.
I just want it to be understood to the kids that go in there, that this is the same thing I dealt with at Washburn. Fairview doesn't have anything going on, but Sherwood on it, so...
Fairview has something going on, they're just not officially working with Jennifer. They would tell you, I'm just telling you, they chose that. We have not mandated Jennifer to be in every building this year. She started with Washburn last year, she's working with... She's working with, she, Fairview knows that Jennifer's available, they have their code, they're doing stuff. So not to say they're not doing anything, they are doing something.
But I just want to be sure that when that sixth grader becomes that big-time seventh grader, that they have the same feeling, the same respect, the same safe, the same whatever at that middle school.
Right.
And that's what Jennifer's working on.
Our academic curriculum is consistent up through, we're going to have a consistent, more consistent social, emotional curriculum is basically what you're saying.
Jennifer's working with Auburn Middle School.
I heard that, I heard that. So when they get to Scotty, they're going to be perfect.
Absolutely. He's going to have no...
You won't have to touch him again.
No office referrals at the high school.
But think about this, they learn how to line up in pre-K. Every year, a teacher's need to go over how to line up. Okay? Because they want to know, are you as serious about lining up as my teacher was last year? Just like at the high school. He's, Phil probably has to tell them, when we're in line, we have to, it's, you know. So it's, it's AMS's job to teach what they mean by respect, responsibility, just like at the high school. They teach the students, what does it mean to be respectful, responsible? So you're absolutely right. That's why Jennifer's working with the schools, making sure we're putting those systems in place consistently.
And it looks different at different developmental ages, right?
Say it again, Michelle, I didn't hear.
Yeah, it, it looks different at different developmental levels.
Right.
So it's...
The other thing that I see it doing is dovetailing with the habits of mind or habits of work. The kids are starting to take responsibility for their own behavior and that's huge. And so when they get to the middle school after they've come through Washburn and the other programs, then they should be at a different point the kids that didn't have this. So I'm hoping that by the time they get to Scotty down there, they will be fully ingrained in them so they know how to behave, even if they don't do it, they know how to behave.
Right, exactly.
Then by dealing with all the incoming new students and transfer from other districts and things, you're going to teach them too, so.
It definitely takes a village. In this program, you know, we say it's a framework, it's a program. It takes a good five years to fully implement this whole program. We're in year two, we use the phrase that we're building this plane and we're flying it at the same time. So we have had troubles, we've had our ups and downs and we've had our successes and we're still learning. And, you know, that's okay, we're in education. You know, we're just like the kids, we're learning something new every day. So I just want to conclude with this video that I use clips on.
Go Steelers, go Steelers!
Oh, I know. Every day he has a different one on.
Oh, come on, Nicole, give me one.
Oh, I love him.
I mean, we didn't make the playoffs, but at least we have this. Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS. Ken?
Sorry. Nice picture, Andrew.
Is this Jerry?
I introduce, hey, hey, hey. That's what everyone keeps saying.
Okay, get away from me.
Oh, I think he's all back. Go with him. I have a huge... Oh, my gosh, Andrew.
I didn't do it on purpose. I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. Our three sixth grader...
It's not transmitting.
Wait, we need, Ken?
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 Ken will come out.
I'll send you a look.
Oh, my gosh. That's too good.
We're laughing, if you go on YouTube, there's a principal, it's a principal, right? There's a principal that does little YouTube clips that are hysterical.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are... It's playing in his office.
Oh, he'll do something. Oh, he shut the door.
Is he going to check it out already?
Hopefully he fixes it.
Magic, Ken.
Any questions while we wait on PBIS at Washburn?
No question, but congratulations, you're doing an awesome, sounds like you're doing an awesome presentation.
Sounds like you're doing good and you're doing it as a team, that's real good.
Yes. Nice presentation, guys.
Thanks.
You've cut your instances by two-thirds, let's do that again for this coming year.
Exactly.
It'd be great.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today...
Technology's great. You did, you did see him, right?
Yeah, he came in. He says it's going in the office, but not out here.
Oh.
Uh-oh. It's going to come out.
Huh?
You want me to move?
No.
About their perspective on PBIS.
Having a code at Washburn, I think, helps the kids a lot, having like a visual of what they should be doing.
First Steelers shirt for Christmas.
This year?
Yeah. But my husband's been a Steelers fan for, since he was little.
My family's Giants fan.
Oh, Giants.
And my husband's Patriots, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Drive me crazy, every game.
Well, maybe this isn't going to work.
It's not even coming out of your speakers.
But he says it's coming out.
It's so internal. Give another call.
...and our code is respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe.
Well, I know those are home, my kid.
Let it roll.
Well, let it run.
Could you put a mic back there for us?
There'll be a repeat on television, too.
Okay. We can watch it in silence. I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are our three six...
I don't know what he's saying, but I know what she's saying. No, it is, she did a really...
Can you re-download it?
Well, do you want me to jump off the chambers and I can just bring my laptop up to you?
Okay.
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
It's not coming out of his speaker, so he's...
If he jumps out of the air?
Have it again.
Andrew's our big technology administrator.
Oh.
Come on, Andrew.
Come on, Andrew.
That'll put the pressure on.
I know. It's not even picking up on there.
...of what they should be doing and our code is respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe.
Didn't reset it, no, no. I'll send you the PowerPoint.
Okay, that's good.
I can tell, do you remember?
So each of the children talked a little bit about different parts. So Ella, the first child, all three of them are sixth graders. And she talked about how it has created that common language in our school. Wherever you are, cafeteria, the library, hallway, classroom, we're all speaking the same language. For the second boy, he was on check-in, check-out and he has graduated since then and it has helped him curb his behaviors. He can articulate his goals, which off the top of my head was to use kind language, to be respectful, even if it's a non-preferred activity. And there was one more goal, which I don't remember. And then the third student, she talked about our code ticket program. So we hand out code tickets when students are respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe. In common languages, not in the classroom. In classrooms, they have their own Tier One incentive program. But out in the cafeteria, we give out code tickets, students cut them in half, half go in a drawing and the other half they can use at the school store. You know, our students don't have a lot of money sometimes, but at least they can use those code tickets to buy those pencils and the trinkets and the sweatshirts and whatever else from our school store. And then it just kind of tied back into that they have seen, all three of these students have been at Washburn for the last six years. So they have definitely seen a huge shift over the time. And that was without any prompting too. So we kind of just talked about what is, what does it look like or what has it looked like in the past and what they see. And they've, all three of them agreed that it was a huge, has been a huge improvement since the last couple of years, so.
Huge presentation.
Yeah, very nice.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Very hopeful as well. I don't think we have any committee reports, do we?
I don't.
No, I don't think any, with the holidays and things, I don't think there were any committee reports, pretty active it took place. We will have those reports at our next meeting. And speaking of our next meeting, it comes up on January 16th. It will be a six o'clock workshop and a seven o'clock meeting. Following committee meeting will be February 6th. When are we starting budget?
Probably after February, March, first meeting in March. And, yeah, I think we have to look at our calendar.
I think we do too. I think we need to start it before then, but all right.
It won't be ready until the end of January.
Any future agenda items, please let Katie or myself know. We have already had our executive session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All of us in favor? Thank you very much, declare as adjourned.
It's too warm.
They do clear when somebody...
She knew what it was too.
She knew where?
Yeah.
Listen, sweetie.
Okay, thanks for that.
Somebody wondered if she...
Or center.
I don't know, I just...
All right.
But no, I don't know.
That's fine, I understand.
Thank you for your...
Thank you. Love you too.
Thank you, bye. Thank you for coming.
I know. He said, "Yeah, you do."
I'll share them.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are our three sixth graders that are going to talk a little bit about their...
Thank you.
Where we going now?
Right, please.
Yes.
I haven't seen anyone on anything yet, so, okay.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are our three sixth graders that are going to talk a little bit about their...
Please help her.
Arrow, yes. Wow, it's tall. Yeah.
Come on.
Ready?
Yep. Who's that freedom to her?
She's at the inauguration.
I was... I just didn't know they were...
Mic's still live, girls.
Good for her.
Michelle, mic's still live. Michelle, mic's still live, just so you know. Unless he's turned them off. No, they're not. They're still on.
You bad man right here, I'm going to get in that wall.
I will... Let's walk away from the mic.
So this is going to be the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will...
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Let's walk away from the mic.
So this is going to be the...
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going from one to five.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are our three sixth graders that are going to talk a little bit about their perspective on PBIS.
Having a code at Washburn, I think, helps the kids a lot, having like a visual of what they should be doing. And our code is respectful, responsible, persistent, and safe. We use it in classrooms, specials, halls, and outside, just about everywhere.
Okay. So, okay, that's, that's all I wanted to get from you. Okay.
Jennifer? That's Andrew.
Andrew. Oh, Andrew.
Oh.
Who's, oh, it was the Andrews. Yeah. You're quiet.
Okay. So, right, you fill it up.
Yeah. Yeah. Very awesome. Great. Right. Very awesome. Great. Right. All 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 right.
I thought it'd be kind of cool to talk to the kids today about PBIS and get their perspective. So here are our three sixth graders that are going to talk a little bit about their perspective on PBIS.
Having a code at Washburn, I think, helps the kids a lot. Having a code at Washburn, I think, helps the kids a lot.